Welcome to tonight's board meeting. Today is September tenth. I've got to check with our IT guys back there. Are we good to go live? All right, thank you. Appreciate you guys around top if you don't miss a beat. We already called the meeting to order. We had executive session earlier to address matters leading to the employment of individuals. We didn't say the pledge. I'll have everybody stand and do this. Put a pledge in the papers, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. It's the first full week of school. We've got people that are still alive, so that's always a good thing. So, on to the regular meeting and routine matters. So first, resolve that upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board has hereby approved the following routine matters. Board of Education minutes for August 27th, 2024, and the CSE recommendations listed here in the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Some motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, presentations. First one up is the 2024-2025 school year opening with Mr. Bissetta.
All right, we'll get a flavor for the opening of the year through the various updates from our administrative team, but wanted to address some of the big things that people are always interested in learning about. How many, what is our enrollment, for example? And there are fluctuations, certainly, and we'll still go through usually in the first week or two, there's some variation, but wanted to show you those numbers. But I wanted to start by saying, overall, I mean, whenever you have hundreds of people in buildings and a lot of moving pieces, and particularly this year, with some people in different places than they were before, I think the staff and the students and the parents did a remarkable job. Really, no major, huge issues. It was really probably as smooth as you could have hoped for, and that only happened because we had a lot of people who really were on top of things and doing the best. Is it perfect? No, it'll never be perfect. There are always things that we want to work on and be better at, but I think, given all of the moving pieces, we're really pleased with the opening. And some things will continue to settle in over the next few days. Transportation's one that we always talk about. Our drivers, one of the hardest jobs and most important jobs that are, Sidney Clark, our supervisor, does a phenomenal job in dealing with a lot of moving pieces, and we just want to, again, reinforce the fact that it takes a few days to settle in when you're doing different dismissals and there's different routes and there's a lot of things at play. So things will, we'll still always settle down, but again, they've done a very good job. So again, I'm going to just address a few areas. Again, I don't want to sound like a broken record on some areas that we've talked about. We'll just highlight some of the, some of the big areas and that people ask the most questions about. One is, your is enrollment. I think there are a couple of trends that you'll notice in that initial, those numbers. One, and this has been consistent, certainly in the time that I've been in Canastota, we've been fortunate in that we don't have any wide variation, or I should say trend. We have some variations. We don't have any trend where you see years stacked together of diminishing or declining enrollment, for example. And in fact, if you really look at that closely, you don't even have two years stacked up, except for one case. If you look at eighth and ninth grade, ninety-three, ninety-one, those are the only two back-to-back. I guess we have ninety-sevens too. We have ninety-seven and ninety-seven. Those are the only cases where we're actually in the same decade. You know, we have some seventies, we have some eighties, nineties, one-hundreds, but when you see a downward number, like last year, right, we had a small graduating class. Well, what's our senior class this year? Our biggest class, right? Then we dip down a little bit again next year, and then we're back to tenth grade is right around a hundred now. So we don't see any significant trends that indicate that we're losing population, as many districts in upstate New York, certainly in our region, have experienced. And I would say, our loss of population is certainly, we're in good shape compared to many of our neighboring schools. So, and I did just the quick average for those thirteen levels, that averages right out to ninety-two. That's pretty much about what you expect, right? We don't have any huge variation. So that's positive, very positive. And even when you see a dip and you look at where K is, so you don't really have, you never, we don't strain any back-to-back seventies even together in those numbers. So that's positive. We always talk about this, I'm not going to belabor the point, but it is an important point. It shapes everything that we do. We have to do a good job at the things that we're required to do. We're a public school in New York State, and therefore, we have to do certain things, and we want to do those things well. We want to have a good school experience. We want to be compliant, we want to do the things that are important for schools to do in New York State. But then we also want to be good members of the Canastota community, and we realize that there's a larger purpose beyond just the compliance piece. We want to be good partners with local businesses and organizations because we are the lifeblood, we are the long-term sustainability, we're a key piece of that in our region. And so it's going to be important for us to continue to do things that just make sense. And there are a ton of examples of things that are happening in our school where our kids are connecting to the outside world, and that is always going to be important no matter what changes go through the world of education. And we looked at some of these things on our first day of school with our staff. Again, just reminders of, you know, there are some positive things to build on. We do have our capital project. We have been removed from the state identification list for performance. We're going to be talking about state performance numbers at an upcoming board meeting because we now have three A testing data and region's data, and so that's something that we're going to be talking about presenting. We have had programs recently highlighted at the regional level that have been very well-received, and in upcoming days and weeks, we're going to be announcing really some pretty cool partnerships with some local and regional groups that are going to really help, help us round out our experience for, educational experience for kids. And again, thank you to a lot of people on this final piece, because it's not insignificant. It doesn't happen automatically, and Tracy Leone did a great job of sort of shepherding us through this process of getting a qualification for free and for free breakfast and lunch for all students. You'll see that in the news. There are some districts who are moving in that direction, but not everybody has that, becoming more frequent. We were in pretty early on this and really have a full year under our belt. This is our second of four years that we are qualified for, so all positive things. So we need a new kitchen built, so. So just in some categories of things that were new or fairly new, one thing that's not as new is that we are under our K-12 instructional plan, right? Some things that were seismic shifts in the way that we operated in the last few years, well, we're not going through those seismic shifts. We're more settling in and trying to get comfortable with the things that were, we've already implemented. So we, but we're trying to grow and evolve. So for example, a couple of years ago, when we started a district-wide curriculum council, well, that splintered, because after sort of assessing what works, how could we be better, we splintered and we have a curriculum council solely focused on curriculum instructional specifically issues, and then a district, a K-12 advisory cabinet that looks at things that are more broadly impact school operation. So this year is the second year of that splintered arrangement. It's become more practical because we have a lot of subgroups of teachers from different buildings, administrators from different buildings, working together and coming up with plans. And so these larger district groups are really just to make sure that we're doing what we said we're going to do. So it's sort of a sharing and accountability thing internally, but the real work, a lot of times now is happening in some groups. So example of that, well, for, the final example was our faculty advisory council. This is the, only the second year that we've had that, and I think that group is going to be able to do some exciting updates operationally. How do we function? One of the primary works of the faculty advisory council was bringing together things that will help the staff, people on the same page with, whether you're a new staff member, a veteran staff member, how can we make sure that everybody's on the same page from a process procedure standpoint? How do we, who do you go to for this or that? So just to try to take out some of the things that become impediments to what we really want to focus on, which is helping kids learn in a safe environment. So, new K-12 social studies curriculum, important piece. We didn't, we, the district really lacked that piece, a coherent defined social studies curriculum. That was the direct result of the work came under that curriculum council umbrella. That's a specific example of something that's being implemented this year with cooperation from a K-12 group of teachers who helped that, shepherd that process through so that we now have, we have a coherent social studies curriculum that people understand this is why we're doing what we're doing, and this is going to address the standards that we need to address. Again, there'll be much more during the course of the year from a number of people, certainly from Ms. Garafalo, who's going to continue to update us on how the badging and credentialing project is moving forward. That is completely consistent with the Blue Ribbon Commission in New York State. That is acknowledged, and that's why there's great interest in our project from a regional standpoint, because we have other districts who are now wanting to partner with us, other large organizations who are willing to partner with us, because we have a model that is very beneficial for everybody involved, the school, the kids, students, and we're really in, pretty far along in that process. And then finally, it matters how we make decisions about how to improve. That means we have to have a consistent, coherent way of looking at data, and so we continue to do that through a consistent lens and using benchmark assessments and using that as a tool for improvement. It's not a hoop to jump through, it's a way of becoming better by being precise in the way that we help kids and meet them where they are and help them learn. So those are just a few other things and instruction. And as far as, as we get into new facilities, again, huge changes by the time we get to the end of the year, even though it's quiet now, huge spaces that people will notice, the big spaces of the district, the auditoriums, the gyms, the cafeterias, will be under construction over the next couple of years, but it's a good thing. And it'll, it'll help us become better and more effective and efficient in parking, in traffic patterns. You're going to see a significant number of changes, both in parking space available. Everybody who knows our district knows parking becomes a problem. We have a lot of people who like to attend events, and we struggle with the parking piece. That's going to be addressed. The traffic flow, another huge problem. For example, if you're walking outside of Robert Street or you're over at South Side, okay, you're going to, there's going to be significant changes. They're going to, I think, enhance our safety and our efficiency in how we bring kids in and out of the building, how outside people from attending events access the building as well. And then there are, supplement the work that's happened in recent years, and science rooms and some of the other instructional spaces. The art rooms, for example, are one of the focus areas that we knew we needed to do significant updates in that space, and so there's going to be some wholesale improvements in, in those art instructional spaces. And these are areas, things that we're really excited about. Again, these are all, well, two of the three are very community schools. We're excited to continue to work with them. That has evolved over really a three-year period now, but we're still only, one of only fifteen districts with that partnership with connected community schools, but that just continues to be a tremendous partnership. But the satellite mental health office, we're really excited to get that implemented. It's just recently happened and brought, everything's been brought together, and so we're just at the beginning of that, and I think there's going to be a lot of our community who's, who are going to be able to utilize and take advantage of that. They're going to be hearing about that as, as a resource. Obviously, the big thing with that is we've removed some of the barriers presented by transportation and getting places. If a student can receive services, families can access services right on site at the school. This is huge. The second item, we're only a few days into it. I can tell you, I, I've noticed a tremendous benefit from our, our new arrangement. I think, I think a lot of people, maybe you'll hear from, on that, on this subject as well from some of the building, but our, our resource officers, just been a tremendous presence, especially at arrival and dismissal times, just a tremendous presence around the district. Think that sets the right tone, that it needs to be an orderly, safe environment, certainly having law, very, very veteran law enforcement officers setting that tone in front of our buildings and interacting with people. That's been very, 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 very positive. And then some things, obviously, reconfiguration's been a big topic. I can't compliment our staff or our students enough with, you know, a fully smooth transition, transition when you're looking at some pretty significant changes in the way we operate, and we'll continue to get better. I think the positive thing is things have gone pretty well, you know, through the first several days of school. It's only going to get better as we go on, as we're able to fine-tune, make adjustments as anything that's new. It's going to take some time to really fully maximize the benefits of something that's newer. But a huge focus that we'll be hearing about throughout the year with updates from staff and students at times is really a focus on consistent intervention to help students and discipline, right? We've talked about both. We need both intervention, we need to be able to help students thrive in school, we also need to hold students accountable, and we want to have an orderly environment for kids to learn in. So both of those areas, and we can do both at the same time. It's not one or the other. We're going to help kids and we're going to hold them accountable. And we're going to focus on things like SEL and goal-setting and teamwork and respect, something that's a foundational piece of any organization that's going to have success is a basic level of being able to work together cooperatively, try to put ideas together in a positive way, and we certainly want our students to be able to, to learn that here at school. One thing that's been well-received by a number of the, a number of the conversations I've had with parents is they like the idea that they had another year. If I was a first grader, I liked the fact that I could stay at Peterborough another year, and third graders have another year at South Side before they transition over to this complex. So that's a nice thing in that we're, I think we held off those transitions and it's been well-received. There are other adjustments, and there's too many to mention really. There's a lot of different adjustments anytime you go through a, any type of change or reconfiguration. But one of the areas that we point to is, for example, what are we doing with, in core instructional areas? And in some areas, like the seventh or eighth grade math in ELA, when those students were having forty or forty-one minute instructional blocks a year ago, they now have sixty-minute daily blocks. So you're talking in a five-day week, you're talking an hour and forty minutes for math in ELA, additional math in ELA instruction. That, then project that over, really, students are here and typically, and students are physically here in school a hundred and seventy-six days typically. So if you do the math, you take a hundred and seventy-six times, you know, an additional forty minutes each of those subjects, it is a lot of hours of additional contact time so students can feel more comfortable and they'll, they'll be more proficient and prepared to succeed. And again, everything is about age level and grade level appropriate operation and certainly the focus on teaming and coordination and consistency. I finally, I put in that final piece, and again, Mr. Schultz can probably speak more specifically about how it's used. I think we're just going to scratch the surface of how that advisory period can be used because we will not be taking students out of academic classes as frequently, but we also can interact with them and things that are still important outside of just academics. Again, we're trying to find the balance of, yes, we want them to do well in math and in ELA and science and social studies, but we also want them to be thinkers and learners and good citizens and people who are, are good, you know, people that businesses want to hire, organizations and teams want them to be a part of. So it's still trying to develop a well-rounded student. So all very positive things. I just wanted to highlight some things that were on the horizon, which will probably be highlighted again, but that's okay. Important dates, I call it open house, incorrect. I guess it's technically back-to-school night, right? So, the principals can correct me with, with what I call them, but the important times are CPM, this Thursday, right prior to that, back-to-school night, we have a ribbon cutting. It's going to be pretty cool. It's going to involve a lot of our students, and Mrs. Fox can, is getting all set for that, but exciting thing, positive thing, sort of a real positive start to the year with the new building. Something we'll continue to emphasize, our parent advisory council, that's prior to, right at five o'clock right here on the eighteenth, right prior to the high school night at six o'clock. But we really want parents, we've had, we think over the last several years of things that have come from the parents who have really wanted to commit to something positive, well, what has come out of it? Well, the Raider barbecue, that we've had three, we've had three now, that originally came from that idea from parents of how do we start to try to build community before school starts, and we've had, you know, I don't think we've ever had less than, I don't know what our, can't remember what our tennis was. We typically have had, you know, five, six, seven hundred or more people at every one, always hundreds of people, so it's been a real, real positive experience. But it's also a chance at the beginning of the year to do a reset, and show, talk more in depth, rather than getting a preview or an overview. That's the time that a parent who wants to make the school better, which doesn't always mean just saying everything's great, it means coming with ideas of how can we improve. That's how we're going to get better. Parents coming in, working with us, will take those ideas, like the Raider barbecue. There's a real push amongst the group. We've developed, I think we started at the end of last year to talk about ways, avenues in which parents can volunteer, because we also realized that there are a number of people who are willing to work with the school, potentially volunteer, and so we want to open up that pathway for them to do it. High school, open house, and then finally, we get into homecoming. We put on the, the homecoming parade and bonfire. That's just the beginning there Thursday. We have games through Friday and dances, but a lot of pub up, that's certainly an event that kicks it off is that Thursday evening session. So a lot to be excited about. As I said, in the upcoming meetings, we will highlight specific items like our performance that we now have data on to use as a barometer with how are we progressing in different areas, and we'll look forward to continuing to update you on specific initiatives that impact the school. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bissetta. Next up, building updates by our principals. Don't fight for it, don't fight for it, just point at time. She'll take it down here, she'll take it down.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Jen.
So things are bustling at Peterborough Street with a full building of students. I will highlight the numbers that Mr. Bissetta shared. We have thirty-six pre-K friends, eighty-four kindergarten friends, seventy-seven first graders, and ninety-nine. eighty-four kindergarten friends, seventy-seven first graders, and ninety-nine second graders. So that's two hundred and ninety-five kiddos at Peterborough Street. We love our new tile and the rest of our classrooms on the first and second floors. So that was installed in July. And we have several new classrooms and have shifted a lot of locations to accommodate our second-grade friends. But the building is bright and seems just bigger and cleaner and there's a lot of activity everywhere, of course, because it is just shy of three hundred students in our favorite historic building. So that's about fifty more students overall than we are used to, but we're figuring out our more congested hallways and stairwells and shared restrooms, but everyone is adjusting very, very nicely to that. We're never sure this time of year who goes home more tired, if it's the littles or if it's the adults at the end of the day. But we're having a lot of fun getting to know each other, our new school schedules, and how things work at Peterborough Street. As Mr. Vasata mentioned too, we're excited and very thankful for our, the presence of our school patrol officers. So Officer Ken and Officer Mike have both been present at Peterborough Street. Officer Ken is our guy, so he's with us for arrival and dismissal every day. And that presence just sets a really great tone. So we're excited about that and the relationships that will be formed with our little ones too. I am especially enjoying visiting classrooms and sharing a story at each grade level. I'm sharing our school as a family, it's always our motto at Peterborough Street, and then the great story BU with our second graders. So they are, you know, our great role models who are now the seniors and experts at Peterborough Street. So that's a lot of fun getting into classrooms and, you know, reuniting with everybody. We had a great turnout for our pre-K and kindergarten orientations at the end of August, and then the same for our open house, drop-in and drop-off on the third of September. We have about eighty percent of our kiddos represented, so that's a pretty great number there. And some upcoming things, Ms. Burns and I are coordinating a volunteer orientation for parents or caregivers who would like to come in and volunteer, if they've not been previously trained. Maybe they'll accompany us on a field trip. And to show our school spirit, we're all wearing our class colors Friday for our very first spirit day.
So that's, this is going to be at Peterborough Street.
Thanks, Jen.
Sure.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
How are you doing?
So, I'm going to use Sean's word. We're really off to a remarkable start at Southside. And I just want to thank the staff for, they come in during the summer months and they meticulously set up these classrooms that are just such warm, welcoming environments for our students. And they really invested in that. And they also invested in professional development because we were launching the new social studies curriculum too, that we were talked about. So they were really working hard. You know, summer is not their off time, believe, believe me. I do want to thank parents as well for just preparing the students as they come into our doors, you know. That, again, a lot of effort, so thank you to every parent. So I just wanted to talk for, because Jen mentioned about enrollment. We welcomed thirty-six pre-K students. We have two classrooms, eighteen each. So they really are joy. They bring a different twist to that building. We have eighty-six third-grade students and ninety-five fourth. And the social studies curriculum that we're implementing this year, the teachers invested in that professional development this summer, which was, which was fantastic, where now we have a curriculum K six. So we have a foundational curriculum in social studies that we really didn't have before. But we weren't alone, you know. In New York State, that, New York State, the Education Department gives you that framework for social studies, and then you're kind of on your own to develop it. But like Sean said, we had high school teachers on our social studies committee all the way down to kindergarten, taking a look at various programs and coming to that collective decision on a good one. And I can tell you, this is a great one. It's called Studies Weekly. And each student will get a publication each week. So they get one of these. So, reading at grade level. There's also writing included in it. And in, with every single article, for teachers, and Kate was a part of our professional development, with every article, there is a lesson. So the lessons are provided for teachers. They did some training with the online platform to become very familiar with it. But the resources are really top-notch. And I just think that, you know, we have this quality program that, that not only we're going to support that foundational social studies content, but it's that upping the ante at grade level, reading levels, incorporating that writing. The vocabulary is advanced for even our little guys. So, very exciting. In fact, the teachers were working with the social studies curriculum, liked it so much that we're actually going to try to launch it at third grade for science. So it's really exciting as far as the curriculum. What goes hand-in-hand with that is the measurement of where our students are at. So next week, we're going to do our NWA benchmark testing. So just identifying where those students are to best place them for those additional services for reading and math support. So again, just having all of these things set up to, you know, have students be so successful is really exciting. I can't thank Mike enough as far as an SRO, to have that, that person in our building, that presence. It is really a game changer. So, thank you.
How are you?
Nice.
So very excited to be here and giving you an update on our middle school. So we had a great turnout for our supply drop-and-go. So the fifth and sixth graders were able to come in and see their homeroom classes, and we have new cubbies for them to keep their supplies, because they're all switching classes, so we wanted the space for them to keep their stuff. So when other people are sitting in their desks, they, space just for their own things. The seventh and eighth graders were able to come and see their lockers and drop off their supplies. Just want to say thank you to Ms. Murray, Mr. George, and Ms. Hamlet. They came in and helped Mr. Cogan and myself with our drop-and-go night. Also, the hub had a supply giveaway, so that was very beneficial, that they could just, students and parents could just get the supply the students needed. So thanks for the hub. We, the first few days of school, kids getting right used to changing schedules, different teachers getting used to the time in the hallway. We gave them a little bit of extra time at arrival, a little bit of extra time for dismissal, extra time between classes, just so they could get used to their schedule. We met with the entire student body, all three hundred and seventy-seven students. We didn't do it by grade level, we did it as a middle school. I wanted the students to look and see, this is our middle school. So it was a really great opportunity for the students to all hear about the school, the procedures of the school, the expectations. And they're doing a really good job now getting used to their, their schedules, finding their classes, and knowing what to do. Upcoming events, one of them's on there. So our middle school open house, back-to-school night, whatever you want to call it, is on Thursday at six. Again, I apologize whoever's out there. My parent letter that went home to middle schoolers said seven to eight, and I was like, huh! So I did send out a parent square, so please note, it is six to seven. So I'm sorry about the mix-up with the time. Right before that is our ribbon cutting. So we will have some students involved. We are trying, hopefully, we'll know by tomorrow, confirmed, to have an exciting guest. So I will put it out there, if it's confirmed who that is going to be. So that's very exciting for the students, really tapping into, this is our school, what can we do to make our school special? Picture day is on the nineteenth, and another exciting thing, on the fourth of October, we're going to have our first middle school dance. So a lot of exciting things going on in the school. Let me see if there's anything else. I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations to the girls varsity soccer day, one-zero, won Ida overtime, just as planned, right, Mr. Seansow?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Time zero.
I know, I know. I wish they'd have done earlier, but it was a great game, girls were awesome. So, good to go coach Mangusi as well. Shout out for him. Certainly, starting year, it's been an outstanding start to the high school. And I got to tell you, with the things that we've changed, as you know and you're well aware of, there's always this little, like, the ask that we're making for our building, for our staff and for our students, the hat rule, no hats, the cellphone, a little addition from last year, because remember last year, the cellphones were not allowed in the classroom, and then the backpack rule, and, as well as advisory. So all these things are happening at the high school. It's been unbelievable. It's been unbelievable with the work of our teachers and our staff, and our students have been amazing, outstanding. In fact, yesterday, our building planning team being talking with the teachers, and the feedback coming from the students to the teachers is very positive. They feel it's different. They use words like calm, happier. They didn't use the word orderly, but I will. It's definitely feeling like it's more in order. It's not to say last year wasn't, but there's no question there's a different vibe in our building. And I really feel, if I could sum it up, it's a focus on school and on education, that's what it's about. It's still having fun and enjoying it. So I'm very, very grateful to our entire school. Our high school has been just an outstanding step in the right direction, and been doing great things, and I look forward to this year. So really, really grateful. I had the opportunity with all the students, just again, the cooperation of the students has been phenomenal, working together, raising questions. I had a meeting, I don't know, last week with a Q and A with the principal, it wasn't as many as some of the other people, but people showed up and asked questions about the backpacks. I appreciate that. I told the students, anything that we do, you have every right to come in and talk to me about, anytime. Well, not anytime, but when I'm there, and during the school hours. But, the point of the matter is that I want to hear from them as well. And we're going to work through the backpacks, our locks are in now, we're ready to go, we'll get them out, and we'll get that even more, more succinct as well. Being patient with the students and being patient with the process. But this is all about education, it's all about an environment that is focused on learning and engaging our students. And I think we've done, the students and the staff and these rules are really, really helpful. So, very happy about that. The advisory, really, I used the word discovery. We have so many people discovering how great advisory is. The idea that we can use it now to connect with the student, or even for our nurse to connect with students. And the first thing, one of the things she said to me today, Mrs. Gardner, was, I don't have to take them out of class anymore. So the different things that she may have to register them or do, she says not pull them out of class. So just things like that. Some of the, our assemblies, except for the seniors, the first one we have of the seniors, because of their Voces program, all of our assemblies, both this last week and this coming week, starting tomorrow, another set upcoming, all through assembly. No class from time to time is lost. So, we're taking full advantage of this advisory, we're going to continue to. We're going to continue to discover more ways to use it in a positive way for our kids, and I think it's extremely exciting. I have to tell you, the, the school patrol officer, Officer Kurgan, who's our, the high school, I think it was the first day, it's about, we just got everybody, we've done the announcements around eight o'clock, I'm looking, he's outside checking the outside of the building. Walking around, making sure, he's doing that every day. He is around. He's in our lunches, he's around the building, he's checking for safety and security. It's unbelievable. He's in our dismissal and our arrival for buses, he's there. So, can't speak enough, as the others have, of the presence of our school patrol officers. It's phenomenal. It's outstanding, it makes a big difference. And again, maybe that's part of the settling. Maybe that's just part of how things are just calm. Things are moving along. So, very, very good start there, and grateful to have him and Ken, Officer Ken as well, around as well. So it's been great. I do, I do have to say, I know we all agree to this, but I want to say that, how good the buildings look. And thank, I really want to say thank you to Mr. Campbell and the team. Just an outstanding job. And I've been building as well, can verify, but so can our principals as well, and our whole team has just been, that's been very, very impressive this year, with all the things they've had to do, that I get to, you can see in your building as you come in every day during the summer. Just so grateful for the work that they do, and they just keep working. They're always doing something, always. So I'm very grateful for that, and very happy to, to, to just thank them for that. So overall, really, you've got the schedule, things are coming up, we're excited about that. Back-to-school night, we did have a sound check. Mr. Seansow, this is twice you're being recognized. You were at the Hootie and the Blowfish sound check. We had students, some of our students go to the Hootie and Blowfish, not concert, but the sound check on this past Friday. And it was, it was great. There's some pictures on the TV, you can see them. But again, our students are getting exposure to, to possibilities of things that they might want to do in their lives. Maybe you want to be a part of that. Maybe you want to be a part of concerts, which is a huge, huge avenue of revenue in our country and the world. So, our students were able to get this opportunity through what Mr. Vasata's been working on, and Ms. Raffalo, Raffalo's doing, and just the connections to help our students, again, just get ideas of what is it that you might want to do, and maybe you want to do that. So, very cool experience for them, and very grateful for those opportunities for our students, and we'll keep doing it. That's it.
Thanks, Schultz. All right. Moving on to new business. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve the true care services agreement. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby create the position of instructional computer specialist. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next up is committee reports. We have not had any committee reports as the school year is just starting. I do want to share, or share that with all the trustees prior to the meeting, you got to notice, at least a rough calendar outline from Ms. Leone, take a look at that. Nothing is set in stone yet. This is kind of a rough guideline of what we've used in the past, but dying with everybody's schedule. So if you just take a look at that and make sure that aligns with the schedule for the committees you're on. Just for those who are listening, I'm just a reminder of who our committees are this year. Academic is Jennifer, Courtney, and Greg. Facilities is myself, Maureen and Greg. Finance is Scott, Mark, and Jennifer. Policy is myself, Mark and Scott. And Safety is Maureen and Courtney. So again, no need for additional comments tonight. Take a look at that. We can send, share some emails and send some time. Coordinate with Ms. Leone about calendars, sure that up. But this is a rough guideline that we could try to use to make everybody's calendars work. So, moving on, up next is board calendar period. I'll lead us off. I was just going to say, huge thank you to all our staff, top-down, bus drivers, maintenance people, teachers, kids and people. Thank you for all that you do. I know the first, the first couple days of school is not easy, being ready to teacher. I know it's crazy. You know, those usually are sleepless nights coming into the week of Labor Day. But every year, we pull it off. Kids are here safely, things run smoothly. I know, we as a district, as a board, ask a lot of you, whether it's curriculum changes, you know, reconfigurations, whatever it might be, we all take it in stride. And I know it's not easy. Running around with just a couple kids is enough work for me, let alone a whole building or a classroom full. So applause to you guys. Continue with doing what you're doing. Yes, thank you. Certainly definitely goes unreckoned, definitely goes recognized, that you guys put in the effort, and we truly appreciate that. We know we ask you, a lot of you, and we're off to a good start, and just keep priding it away. So, I'll turn it over to anybody else. I know Mr. Owens has a, something he would like to share as well.
Yes, and Lauren and I inadvertently wanted to talk about the same. I had the honor of attending the welcoming assembly for faculty and staff last week, and I just want to express my profound gratitude to our educators and support staff for all that they do. I've been married to an educator for eighteen years, and I've grown accustomed to the personality shift that inevitably occurs in teachers as the first day of school approaches. I found out, perhaps the hard way, that it's best to just kind of lay back and let it happen. Just as it's not advisable to get into the face of a boxer preparing to enter the ring, it's also not advisable to get in the face of a teacher beginning a week or so before the start of the school year. Even if it's an attempt to soften the blow with some sort of lame, hey, look at the bright side kind of cliche, right? Because after all, it's a process, just like anything else. And things work much better if you just trust the process and follow it through its natural progression. Well, with that being said, during the pinning ceremony, as I was greeting and shaking hands with our veteran educators and staff, I noticed something common amongst all the recipients. There was no eye-rolling, there was no long faces, there were no looks of panic or exasperation. It was all smiles and enthusiasm, a genuine sense of contentment for being back for another year in Cana Stota. Even Mrs. Maison, who I felt should probably have been receiving a Congressional Medal of Honor rather than a pin for forty years of dedication, came forward with a big smile and a look like she was already fired up and ready to go. Hasn't been an easy few years here in our district, but the ability to retain that enthusiasm despite the difficulties, it's inspiring, and it's a testament to the character of the faculty and support staff that have been assembled in our schools. It's been said that the greatest asset of a school is the personality of the teacher. And I add by extension, those who are in any position to support our kids. And I'm just grateful for all the continued smiles and the continued enthusiasm of a truly magnificent group of people. group of people. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for being here, thank you for all that you do and will do for our kids, and to let all of you know that I wanna do whatever I can to support you as you continue to support and encourage our children.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr.?
You know.
Nope. What he said, right? Anybody else?
Lauren, I got a couple.
Yeah?
Um, along a similar line, one of the things that I wanna recognize is, um, those are our employees that work with our students over the summer, and are all, are doing things not necessarily getting paid to do it, um, so whether it's, um, you know, summer enrichment programs, or athletics, or any of the various things that our educators are doing, kind of on their own time to help our students over the summer, I definitely wanna big, give a big thank you to everybody that, that is doing that, um, or has done that all this last summer. Um, number two, Mr. Schultz stole my thunder, um, yes, um, we had a great opportunity that Mr. Basada, um, set up with, a partner with Live Nation to take some students to, um, the amphitheater, um, I, I do a little live entertainment for my job, so it, it, um, was kinda cool to see, um, running concerts on that scale is something that's, that's crazy, um, and our students being able to get to see that and learn about that, um, and, and yes, we were onstage, which is kinda cool, I have a picture, I'll show you. Um, so that, I think that's a great program and a great asset that our community could have, um, I know we've done a great job with the sports management thing, I think this is another avenue our students can take. Um, the last thing I have, and I'm not gonna try to be the, the person bringing everything down, but, um, a little more of a serious topic, um, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Basada, Mr. Schultz, and Ms. Fox today had to hear me talk about the last couple of years, has been, uh, bullying on our campus and, and students that are going through a lot of things in their lives. One of the things that I'm getting behind with our principals and Mr. Basada is, um, having our, our faculty on campus kinda start doing a better job trying to report things that are going on so we can track better and understand what our students are going through, um, and see the patterns of our students and what they're going through. So whether we get reports of the same kid is getting bullied, or the same kids are doing bullying, or whatever we might wanna call it, um, it's gonna give us patterns to be able to address issues going on in our school. Um, so I really hope that, um, as we talk about this, as, uh, Mr. Schultz, Ms. Fox kinda push some of this along, um, that our teachers take it, as we're not trying to get kids in trouble, we're trying to establish patterns of what's going on in our students' lives so we can help our students, um, throughout the year, so that's, that's what I have to say, and I'm done.
Anybody else? It's quiet on this end, the ladies good for tonight? I'm not gonna call you out, all right. All right, moving on, superintendent's report.
Well, I talked a lot earlier, so I'm gonna spare.
So make this short and sweet is what you're saying.
Very short and sweet.
All right, you got that on record.
Yep, and actually, just an extension of some of the things that were mentioned, um, really some cool things that are in the works that we just scratched the surface of when, uh, Mr. Sanz talked about, for example, this opportunity for kids to attend a concert. The idea is that that's not a, and I can't emphasize this enough, this is not a one-and-done type thing. You know, cool, yes, when kids remember that experience, yeah, um, but we really wanna have something that's built for the long haul, and so that's an example of a partnership, that is just the initial, uh, something that came together, literally within an opportunity came up a couple of days, literally a couple of days before it happened, and we didn't really have access to kids in the normal way yet, cause they weren't back. And so, um, the idea is that we'll build on this and that there'll be a variety of opportunities over the year, um, for students to be able to attend, well, both attend maybe some events, um, but also have people come to us, cause it's not always possible or feasible to be getting on a bus and going somewhere, but we're gonna have people that are gonna be coming here and working with us, and so that's gonna be nice, because gets kids excited and it gives them a glimpse of what is possible, a lot of those skills are transferable, um, you know, event planning and marketing and, and those sorts of things, so really, um, looking forward to being able to update you as the year goes on with, with the full range of things that come out of that partnership. Um, other thing that was just mentioned, which again, I alluded to earlier, we wanna do things, um, that are both, uh, maintaining an orderly building, and I think the reports we got were, yeah, we've had pretty orderly buildings, but we wanna make sure that we're providing the intervention services, and so along with the established services like the mental health service that's gonna fill a particular need, that's important, but on the day-to-day front, when we talk about things of how do we identify, how do we, a priority, and I can't emphasize this enough, a priority, um, certainly for all of us collectively this year is to how can we be, how can we connect those dots in the best way possible? Because it's about, you know, we personalize instruction, yeah, and more and more of that is the wave of future, that's what education is, is personalized educational experiences. Yes, everybody has a certain base foundational experience, but how do we make it relevant to an individual student? We also need to individualize how we, how they make their way through our schools, and they need different intervention, different assistance in different ways and times, and so that is a priority as well, not just the instructional piece, but to be, you know, how they, how their, their day-to-day, um, life in school goes, so, um, again, we'll be excited to update people on, on, um, how those, some of those things develop, um, through the course of the year. Um, some, just some things that I wanted to, um, wanna highlight, because this is something I've got a lot of questions on, uh, do we have to take the regents? I just wanna clarify that, um, because there's been a lot in the media about this blue ribbon commission and things are changing, times are changing, and it's true, but we also still are in New York State and things take a while, and so, yes, um, there are some things that are in the works, but we don't have all of the, um, all of the rules, regulations, you know, that we have, um, so that's gonna be, we anticipate coming out this fall and going through the course of the year, that's gonna be something that evolves over time. So when people are asking, well, do we have to take the, do we have to, well, a lot of pieces to that puzzle that we will share with the school community as we get more information, and, um, to give you the, an idea, I think the implementation timeline is about an eight-year, uh, I believe, uh, implementation timeline, so, eight years is, is a long time, and, uh, some more to come on that, but I just wanted to get that out because there was something that people were trying to get more clarification on. Yes, more freedom, more flexibility with how we demonstrate proficiency and how students can, can, uh, schools can locally, um, show that our, their students are meeting standards, but it's just not defined like we would like it. Um, other than that, again, just to re-emphasize again, great job by everybody and, uh, good start, we wanna build on the good start, you know, great year, so thanks to everybody for their work. I would say, uh, as far as how the buildings look, uh, Mr. Campbell really found, uh, some really good floor waxes, and I've never seen the floors look shinier, and they stay shiny, I said, I'm sometimes not the most observant person when, if anybody sees my office, not the, you know, I don't exactly have a flair for decorating and things like that, yeah, it looks really sharp, and so, uh, you know, good job for him and his crew, cause the facilities look nice.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Moving on, personnel recommendations, all appointments pending, current upon fingerprinting. First up, permanent appointments. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint, oh my goodness, Jennifer Simuluka?
Yeah.
As a CSE chairperson is, has, had eighty-five thousand dollars per, per rated effective September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, with a four-year probationary period. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Welcome to board. Um, substitute appointments. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby appoint the following substitutes. Grace Rapazotti as a non-certified substitute teacher at a hundred and fifteen dollars a day, effective September eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Haley Chandler as a non-certified substitute teacher, a hundred and fifteen dollars per day, effective September eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. And Charisa Braxton as a non-certified substitute teacher at a hundred and fifteen dollars a day, effective September eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to coaching. Resolve that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board does hereby approve Austin Ames as an unpaid football coach for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next spot on the agenda is the public comment period. Anybody have anything? Once, twice?
Come on now, Kate.
Are you gonna do like a TikTok or something, you said, to be the first day of school?
I call on it every single year.
Oh, well, Miss Campbell, aren't you doing like a TikTok to answer anything, something special? Okay, all right, we'll keep this moving. Um, last thing we have for tonight is the, uh, future dates, um, I mentioned previously the ribbon cutting at the Robershore Middle School, Thursday, September twelfth, at five thirty. Middle School back-to-school night, September twelfth, at six to seven. The PAC meeting is Wednesday, September eighteenth, at five thirty. High School back-to-school night is Wednesday, September eighteenth, from six to seven. The Homecoming Parade of Bonfires Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at six o'clock. Homecoming Football Game is Friday, the twenty-seventh, Saturday, at seven o'clock. And our next regular Board of Education meeting will be October eighth, twenty-twenty-four, at six-thirty, here in the Media Center.
That's one thing, that PAC meeting is actually five, cause it was, uh, we moved it to five because the.
Five o'clock?
Because the, uh, high school back-to-school night.
Okay, so, correct, five o'clock, I put a PAC meeting on Wednesday, the eighteenth. Okay, that is everything, a motion to adjourn.
Subvo.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.